Today is July 23rd. This is the Property Subcommittee. We have one item on our agenda and continues to be on our agenda, and that's the authorization to the mayor of the disposal of the Parsons Street School property. At our last meeting, we had the opportunity, I believe that was on 6/11, we had the opportunity to discuss this again, and there was a motion to move it forward. I was not available at the last city council meeting. It's my understanding there were some questions regarding the actual motion or the proposal, and a request to reconvene the Subcommittee and discuss the motion again, the proposal, and look at the recommendations, and consider what was the requirements versus recommendations. I was not able, I tried to look on cable channel five to actually view the meeting, but it's not up yet, so I'm at a little bit of a disadvantage to that end, but I have had the opportunity to speak with a couple of the councilors, and that was my general understanding of the meeting, and then again, the request to reconvene the Subcommittee meeting to look at the recommendations. Our original motion was to move the Jessica Allen's proposal. We'd been discussing that, and we were looking at the recommendations, and it was to move it forward to the full committee with the exceptions of numbers three and eight, if I remember correctly. Let's see, yes, three and eight. And to that end, I just, I typed up something brief, and it's just, I'll pass the others down. It's pretty much what we were recommending, a little bit different language, but instead of, with the exceptions of number three and eight, it's just numbers one through six listed. And again, I didn't go into as much detail. In City Planner's recommendations, when we're looking at three and eight, or the other recommendations, they go into a little more, a little more depth than talking about, you know, whether or not, or how it's determined, and the rationale behind some of them versus just the actual recommendation. And JP has also provided another, another list for consideration regarding requirements and recommendations. So before we jump into looking at these individually, does anyone have anything to offer? Yes?
What are you defining as a requirement or restriction and recommendations? Because these are requirements and these are recommendations, but what holds more weight?
Right. Well, and again, there's two documents, I hesitate to call them documents, but there's two proposals here on the table, and I haven't put anything specifically in mind. I was gonna put draft at the top of it, just to, you know, so people were assured that this wasn't something completely unilaterally done, their discussion points. We can certainly discuss recommendations versus restrictions.
Well, this one says that one through six are recommendations and one through 13 are requirements.
Right.
So are you gonna marry these two documents?
Well, we're gonna discuss them tonight. Again, we did have an original motion to move it forward with the six recommendations that are on the sheet that I proposed. The one thing with this, again, it's always been my intent to get this proposal to the full council, allowing a lot of flexibility to the mayor, because we don't wanna have repeats of previous transactions, if you will, sales of city property that had too many restrictions and then, you know, failed to go through as hoped. So again, recognizing that, you know, the, putting a lot of trust in the mayor's abilities.
Yeah, I didn't see a problem with anything that was in the memo, and I didn't, and nobody from the neighborhood had a problem with anything that was in the memo. It's just really been unclear, what's a requirement, what's a restriction, and what's a recommendation?
And I think that's something to discuss tonight, because even, you know, when we look at number one, require a minimum bid of $450,000, I can understand how the full council may have had some concerns with that, because is it a requirement? Is it a recommendation? What if there was a proposal that had everything we were looking for, but they were only offering $425,000? Are we then having to go back because it's listed as a requirement for $450,000?
Right.
So if, I mean, the six that are listed here, like I said, are very simple. JP, you're probably gonna wanna discuss this a little more, because we, in the previous meetings, we did, I see here the registry of, or no, I saw something about a deed restriction for a requirement, I think in number six, and we have discussed deed restrictions at the previous meetings, too. And again, I know there was some concern with, I know we, I had previously expressed concern about having deed restrictions, just making it a little more convoluted, or it could tie our hands a little bit more with the sale of the property. So I, and I'm not sure if everybody has a copy of this.
This is JP's.
Yes.
I gave one to the mayor, and I don't know if you passed it back.
There's one list of requirements and one list of recommendations.
Did you get it to me tonight? Oh, that one. I just have, I don't.
I just handed it to you.
Okay, that's here.
It goes with the plan.
Yeah.
Should I make copies of it? Do everybody have copies?
I think I do.
How many copies would you be making?
Five, just to say.
I'd like one chance.
I'll make ten to be safe.
I think there's areas of agreement, I think between both proposals, and I think the areas of agreement are that there be a split in the parcel, a division in the parcel, reserving approximately one acre for future public use, and the other acre to be offered for sale. So I think that's pretty much in agreement with both proposals.
Regarding parcel B, you wanna cut that in half?
Parcel A. Parcel A and parcel B and C are really, parcel A and B are really the same parcel right now.
Gotcha.
So again, if we're looking to, we just wait for, we just wait for Jessica, she's an important player in this.
And we'll have enough of us.
Yeah, exactly. Some of us, really.
She's probably, she wants the one one.
It'd be nice if the cable.
We have high tech equipment.
Yeah, exactly.
Could you consider removing the split from the line up? I mean, I know that you, it sort of makes it nice.
Yeah, we'll wait until the City Planner's here, too, because she was part of that discussion earlier.
And we'll have the parcel in front of us, too.
Do you have the original recommendations by any chance from the City Planner?
No. I have it on my phone.
Okay, 'cause I was gonna say, it helps to explain some of the reasoning behind the one acre split. I have a copy here, too.
Yeah.
Who else needs a copy?
Take another one.
Yeah, I have that one thing I think.
The copy didn't get the yellow, so I'm sure, we wanna be sure you have that, to know what we're talking about, so.
I think I do.
Yeah, parcel A. So looking for areas of agreement, I think we were at the 330 feet back, but there was some discussion from, while you were away, Jessica, I want to remember.
Well, neighbor.
Neighbor had some concern.
The reasoning behind, I guess, the line here as opposed to moving it up? Um, because when I did development scenario calculations based on zoning, um, based on the number of units, and if you have a copy of my memo, it sort of involves all those calculations out from parking requirements. So I think in terms of what the zoning says, in terms of parking requirements for specific uses, and then the buffers that are gonna be needed, and the landscaping that's required, and all of the other amenities that are gonna be required in the zoning, that's about the minimum amount of land that you would need to develop that building for either commercial or residential organizations.
Actually, I'm gonna pass this down. It's a little, it's got a coffee stain on it, but you're more than welcome to it. I have the document electronically, too.
So when it came to saving parcel B during the split, I think there was some concern that there be some, some, some real plans for this being served, serving future for a park, or for community garden, and that I think there needs to be some language to make that definitive. And I think the language, the city retain parcel B along with C, and that the parcels B and C be designated for public uses in municipal park, which may include community gardens forever. And not just, we reserve it, and if you reserve it, well, maybe at some point, we take it back, and we build something intensive there. If you reserve it, if we're gonna make a decision to do a park, I think it makes sense to make a park.
So you've got the step back 330 feet on each of these lists.
Right.
Are you making it a requirement or a recommendation?
I could certainly see you making it a requirement. I mean, that's one of the things that we heard from the community, the community was definitely asking for open space. I think there was general, general agreement to split the parcel. The one thing that we were looking at again in the previous meetings was moving it forward for the authorization to dispose of parcel A, the front parcel, and there was a lot of discussion about parcel B. So the idea of putting in language to say that it's going to be a park, or, you know, what specifically we were looking to do, was it gonna be a park, was it gonna be community gardens, that hadn't been decided yet. So we felt the best thing to do would be to move it forward with the disposal of the property while maintaining the back section for further discussion.
Could you maintain it as green space and not specify, is green space broad enough to say that the city's not gonna retain it to either build it, or to park trucks on, or whatever, or leave as a vacant lot in the condition that it's in now? Could you designate it as a requirement to be green space? And is that broad enough to give everybody a chance to, you know, should it be a park? Should the ice skating rink go back in? Should we put community gardens in? I mean, would that give it enough, manipulate it enough to be lots of different things, maybe, over the course of time? Because, you know, things evolve, and maybe a park makes sense now, and maybe in fifteen years, community gardens would make more sense.
Well, and again, all I was saying is, the previous meetings, the discussion was more around, let's look at the disposal of the school, like splitting the property and, you know, making that, move that forward as a requirement. I do have recommendation down here, but that was clearly the intent, we're going to split this parcel and move forward with the authorization for the mayor to dispose of the, of the school, sell the school building, if you will. And again, just leaving that completely open, there was clear intent for it to be some type of a park, some type, but we certainly wanted to explore that further. The idea of designating it anything at this time, we're really just kinda focused on the authorization for the sale of the building.
I guess by not designating it at this time, though, that again leaves the neighborhood, oh, does that mean we're gonna come back for, you know, another round of discussions in two or three years? Because basically, we are a neighborhood that is in limbo, waiting for two projects to come to fruition. So we've already been through the, you know, Parsons Street development with the CDC, we're waiting for that to be put in, and now we're waiting for this to be decided. And so I understand you wanna split and move forward with the, you know, sale of the property, which makes sense, but leaving an acre of basically undetermined space, that we are now thinking, well, it's gonna, they say it's gonna be green space, but it's not designated that way. So again, now we have to be vigilant on the alert, and it's not that we don't wanna participate, I can just tell you that we're all getting very tired, and we're, you know, we're working with that neighborhood, we all.
I think I can address that a little bit. I mean, in the proposal that the chair put forward, the wording is that retain the back for public open space. So I don't, you know, I think that's the intent. So I don't even think we.
Currently, it's paved, so.
Right, yeah.
Could the property committee start working on what to do with that open space before parcel A is sold with the building?
Again, what we're looking at, though, is the timelines and the idea of moving forward with the authorization so the RFP can be developed, so they can put it out.
Right, but once that authorization goes through.
There's no reason a counselor couldn't bring that proposal to the city council if they felt so inclined.
But again, the expediency of moving forward.
Right.
On the sale, instead of looking at a full year.
Exactly, I'm not saying that this would hold up the sale at all, I wanna get this through, it's not just the next guy, and I think everybody agrees on what's going on. But can the community work with the property department, property Subcommittee, on ideas for parcel B?
Absolutely.
Okay, does that work?
That would be great.
And that again is one of the issues, we've had a lot of input already, or some input, and again, I think that, if I recall, City Planner, Jessica, this may have been like four meetings ago, there was some discussion of how we might be able to access maybe UMass students, or some, somebody who would be looking more at the landscaping, you know, what type of design.
Yeah, I have, Conway School is also interested, they've expressed interest. But I do wanna make one really important note that I think we need to think about. Parks and Rec does not want that parcel.
That's right.
They do not wanna maintain it, they do not want another park. So you dispose of that back acre, Parks and Rec does not want it at this time, they don't have the capacity to maintain another park. They've been very vocal about that, so you need to think about that. So whether the RFP includes the private developer who's responsible for developing a public open space area may fit more with our fiscal climate at this time in the city. So I'm just putting it out there for something you need to think about. You can reserve that back acre, but John Mason has made it extremely clear he is not interested. And in fact, he owns the playground in the front, that, that's a city parcel that's adjacent to this property, and its maintenance is very minimal, so.
With all due respect to Mr. Mason, who obviously isn't here, I mean, I think it's the city leaders who make the decision on Mr. Mason. And I think this community suffered, I think this community deserves a park. I know I was at a meeting where, maybe in the winter, where this is a big thing by Governor Patrick's administration, put parks in neighborhoods just like this. I think there's a lot of grants for parks, and again, with all due respect for Mr. Mason, I, I think it would make a great place for a park, and I think it should be explored, and, you know, we deal with the maintenance as a component, I mean, it's part of our job to, to work the maintenance. If something else has to suffer, maybe these people get to, should get the, get the first, you know, first strike. Despite it.
I agree. Okay. I think, too, if people were more aware of, like, if it was okay, we don't even know if it's okay for us to mow that front park, you know, so we're kind of like, oh, should we touch it, should we not touch it? And I think if we, if the neighbors had a clearer vision for what was really okay for them to do, you might see a lot, you know, we would probably mow a lot, with how it's tested, clean it up, but.
Well, it sounds like work on that parcel can happen concurrently with selling the front of it, so.
So again, and it was part of the previous motion, that that was one of the recommendations moving forward, so I, I'm seeing that, again, I use the word recommendation, but are we comfortable making a requirement for the splitting of the parcel?
You gotta split.
Yeah.
If you can't make a requirement of RFP, you gotta split it.
Right.
And then release a separate parcel.
Well, again, we're authorizing the mayor to dispose of the property with the requirements. We're not, we're not outlining what the RFP specifically is going to say.
Right, but the parcel needs to go, go through the planning board as a, as an A and R, and be split, and get filed in the registry of deeds, so there's a cost to doing, I think what Melissa's trying to tell you is there's a cost to doing that survey work in splitting it in time. So we just want you to understand all of the moving pieces.
Thank you.
So I have a question, I mean, it sounds to me, just to maybe make this smoother, it sounds to me like we have two proposals, JP's are a little bit longer, just so that we don't waste time on them, are we, I mean, like, for instance, the one as far as it sounds like JP wanted it to be designated as a municipal park forever, your requirement has more of public open space. And I agree, and I, so maybe, should there be a consensus, or JP, are you gonna bring this up as a motions at the city council meeting, or?
I guess we bring it up as a motion here, but I think for discussion purposes, we should be discussing, I think, the flexibility.
Cause I'd like this piece all to be addressed before the general meeting, so if we need to vote on his proposal.
Sure. But this is where we go back to. Open space or green space, I'm not tied to municipal park, but I think the designation that it be left open for green, or a park, park slash community garden, be something that we make a decision about.
I think you guys should run through every single number, and then decide whether that's a recommendation, or a requirement, or a restriction, and then you'll have the three categories. Cause I think everybody likes everything that's on the list, it's just a matter of how much weight each one of those things is gonna have.
Well, some of these we've already discussed, though, at the previous meeting, so we, and again, if, maybe I'm stating this, but at our last meeting, especially with the deed restrictions, we decided not to move forward with that as part of the motion. So it's not that all of these have been, you know, previously accepted. Again, the, whether it's open space, green space, you know, municipal park, there was a lot of input, and I just don't want to, you know, say that, you know, we're gonna make it a municipal park, and then some people from the community might be thinking, well, I thought we were going to have half of that potentially as community gardens, is the community garden part of your municipal park? You know, I really feel there should be, you know, some more input on that. But again, if we say, you know, green space, if that's going to be broad enough, I'm completely comfortable doing that.
I'm comfortable doing that.
Yes.
When you talk about, I understand you don't wanna limit the number of units, is there any way that you can put in that it would not become like a rooming house or a...
But this, again, is where, you know, in the previous meetings, we were discussing, even with a limiting number of units, you know, we'd be looking at these proposals, the units, the number of units also has to do with the number of parking spaces, and we would be, we don't wanna put too many things in here, again, that would limit the types of bids or the developers who might be interested in it, saying that it's not going to be this type of housing. We can certainly say that, you know, certain things are favored or ranked higher over others, but even here, it's my understanding that at the last meeting, somebody wanted to maybe put a listing of the rankings on what we ranked higher than others, and as I previously stated, I would really like to get this to the mayor as queen as possible, so that the mayor has the maximum flexibility to look at, and again, take with her advisors, look at the area and say, what is the best offer on the table? You know, if we get three or four offers, if one has, you know, affordable housing versus community space, and the financials are roughly the same, again, looking at, you know, the master plan and saying that this one isn't ranked higher than the other on an RFP, just leaving that flexibility for the mayor's discretion.
But if you were only get one offer, and it was gonna be a rooming house?
That's my understanding, the mayor wouldn't have to accept one offer, is that correct?
She doesn't have to accept any of them.
It's not a bid, yeah.
Right, but it.
And again, with that discretion, that the mayor's aware of the neighborhood and the needs of the neighborhood, and the neighborhood doesn't need a rooming house. Yes.
Maybe a rooming house is too, too much of a stretch, but what's to protect the neighbors? I know one of their biggest concerns going through the other Parsons was affordable housing, and that there's enough affordable housing in that particular area, and I have no problem with one or two units of a market-based thing, but shouldn't it be specific in, in your proposal that it's sold for market-based with one or two affordable units? I mean, this seems to me pretty open-ended, somebody could come in and put, do a complete affordable, affordable project, there's nothing in this, that you're protecting the neighborhood from that. And I just think that was part of the whole thing that the neighborhood has been looking for, is some guarantees that, you know, that they feel they've suffered, or I won't say suffered, but certainly taken the brunt of the affordable housing in the city of East Hampton, and it's maybe time for some other sections of the city to take it on, and.
I think in Nathan's proposal, number five, it is a recommendation to, for one or two units.
Right, I understand that, but it doesn't say that the rest has to be market-based, it just says it has one or two, that says to me that you have to have at least one or two affordable units, doesn't say you can't have 12 affordable units, and no market-based units, I guess that's my, correct?
Could you change the preference to, preference would be given to proposals which, you know, have seven or more market rate, as opposed to one to two affordable? Because if you say seven, or I'm making five to seven market rate, in, you know, then you're saying, we do want market rate housing in there, but we're okay with some, or, much like the one cottage street here, where it's, I believe it's a mix.
No, it's not, it's 50 affordable units. It's not a mix.
But that's, oh, well, the last thing I had read on it, it was that it would be market rate, what I originally read that proposal, it was market rate, it was affordable, and then it was tax credit. Evidently, that is why, you know, it's always.
It's, since it's been art street development, since this project that is in the process.
I didn't realize that, thank you.
Yeah, no, so just so you know, it's 50 affordable units.
Well, this is definitely under the recommendations, when we get to the proposals, how it's written right now, one to, one to two units of affordable housing should be ranked higher. If we were to put in that type of language, and we could certainly write a dozen additional recommendations, we could recommend that neighborhood business, and again, this is something that was brought up by a neighborhood input, but proposals that included neighborhood businesses would be ranked higher over housing, because again, that was brought to us by, by the community. So we, I'm not opposed writing.
I have that on number four.
Why, cause I'm asking you to just take out affordable and put in market rate, instead of leave out affordable altogether?
No, I don't think that, again, I think we are, the input previously was that we would be ranking at least one or two units of affordable as being a preference, that was the decision that was discussed and agreed upon. It's part of, you know, the city's master plan, I'm certainly for some, of consideration of some affordable units.
And there's also, with chapter 40B, there is nothing to prevent someone coming in and putting all affordable units, am I right? I mean, so I mean, so there's nothing we can do that could prevent that.
Once, once the property's sold. Right. There is something that prevents them from taking the city property that we haven't sold.
No, but even if we write a restriction, does that trump chapter 40B?
Anything we write, I think trumps 40B as long as it meets, I think the mayor has the discretion to review the, the RFP, and make her determination based on what the RFP says, and whether or not the plan makes sense for the community. Once we sell the parcel, I'm not sure we have any control over how it gets used in the future, except for the restrictions that we write. So for example, if there were no restraint, if we said that we support one or two units of affordable housing, as those proposals that we called for this would rank higher, there would be no prohibition to someone inputting a project.
Yes.
I just have a question. I guess my question on five is, where you, you know, where we're talking about the one to two units of affordable housing, it sounds like your recommendation would be, you would like one to two, but not more than that, I mean, what, is that what you're getting at in here?
It was more of one of those discussions, again, that we.
At least one or two, or not more than.
Were certainly favorable in considering affordable housing units.
Some units of affordable.
Some units.
I think it should be a percentage of the project, I think that was our sense, was that if the project was nine to 12 units of residential, then, okay, then there should be probably one or two units.
Absolutely.
That's, that was our sense.
And again, this is a recommendation that it is, that would be, that bid would be considered more favorable than another, because they are considering some affordable housing.
And that affordable housing should be a part of, piece.
We're not saying no to any affordable housing.
But not as, at 80 or 90 percent, I don't think that's what we're looking at.
I think that answered your question. I think, no, I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I think what you just said probably will answer your question. What I had asked is number five, for the one to two units of affordable housing, it's not, you're looking for at least one to two, it's just that there were, you know, units that one, one to two units of affordable housing would be favorable, favorably recommended, but not all units of affordable housing.
So again, if there's eight to 10 units that were available, and somebody put in a bid and was recommending two of them to be affordable housing, that would be favorable. Again, we had community input, even that maybe if this property was made available to artists, or somehow we were able to, you know, provide subsidized housing to artists, that that would be favorable. There were many recommendations, but we wanted to, again, pare this down and provide it very cleanly to the mayor, that this is the skeletal recommendation of what we would, the community and what the property Subcommittee is recommending for the sale of the property, without trying to restrict a developer in, in their plans.
One thing that I see, that I think would be a benefit, would be to have, use this as an economic boon for the city, and to focus on proposals and rank them high if they had the potential to create jobs for the community, permanent jobs, if there was commercial use here, and that seemed like a viable. If there was commercial use here and that seemed like a viable use, that the mayor had the flexibility to say, yeah, we can create some jobs here and if we can do so, that proposal should be ranked higher than a proposal that didn't create jobs but just created residential units.
I think one of the original recommendations was mixed use, preference to a mixed use. Was it?
Yes. I was going to say even for a number seven, I'm looking at my list, proposals which provide space for neighborhood business or mixed use would be ranked higher, you know, would be ranked higher. But again, not actually ranking number one, that this is ranked higher than...
I would say that the economic benefit, the economic boom to the city be...
No, well, I'm just writing it down now, again, for my own notes. It's just one of those things of, that was something that's discussed and it does seem that we're throwing everything back on the table again, so...
I would throw that out as being the highest priority.
I think you need to stop and think briefly on how a developer might think and approach this. You put too many things in this basket. It is too difficult to get financing to be able to do this. It's really hard to develop. It's not an easy job and it takes a lot of money to be able to get the right monies to do all of these things. So if you have affordable units and economic and historic and all of these things, you're going to limit the pool of applicants that are going to be able to bid on the property. And so when the RFP goes out, it's drafted in that such that they're not going to be ranked in terms of one, two, three, four. They're all going to be in there and depending on how they hit each of those different criteria, it'll be ranked as highly advantageous, advantageous, not advantageous, unacceptable. So the ranking is going to go all over the place depending on what they want to do. If they want to do nothing and they want to offer $1.5 million, you have to take that and compare that to somebody who's willing to offer $400,000 and give you affordable housing and community space and economic development and open space. So that's what's going to be, it's going to be the proposals and up to the mayor to make those determinations. Would you rather accept a proposal that puts $1.5 million on the table and does nothing that we're asking? Or do we accept a proposal for 400 or 300 or 200 that has everything that we want? So that, I mean, I'm just saying that's how the process works in terms of the RFP. So I just want you to understand that that's not going to be a one, two, three, four prioritization. It's going to be based on what the proposal is and how they rank within each of the criteria of what we're asking.
So the recommendations...
The minimum would be at least 150, it wouldn't be two, three or four.
No, that you know that yet, because the more restrictions you put on it, you may not make that value.
I don't have any restrictions. There's a list of requirements and there's a list of recommendations.
He's talking about the per- 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 per-
Okay.
The requirements are pretty much what your restrictions would be.
So by splitting the, by splitting the property...
The only requirement, the only restriction that I proposed was to reserve, to have unlimited commercial use at the property based on the underlying zoning. Okay, so there's no restriction there. The developer can come in and do whatever they want commercially, that meets our zoning criteria and it's likely to be the neighborhood business based on your vote the other night. And then limit the number of residential units to something that's proportionate to the existing site, the existing neighborhood. If you look at Federal Street, for example, the south side of Federal Street, there are five lots and those five lots can now support 10 units. That's 0.87 acres. We are selling one acre. If you use the proportions for density, this would allow for 12 units of residential development on site on this acre that we're selling and unlimited commercial space. That was my restriction, that we restrict to 12 units. Under the underlying zoning, the numbers could be far greater.
I have a question. Jessica, you had some people walk through the building and what were some of the estimates they gave you for, you know, rehabbing?
They didn't give me any estimates for rehabbing. They just said that there was evidence of possible light paint, there's evidence that the tiles are asbestos kind of similar to the Old Town Hall situation. You know, the windows looked okay, the roof looked okay, the structure, you know, looked fairly sound, the heating would need to be redone. So there's definitely some investment that's going to need to put into that property to bring it up, so...
I think there's a lot of investment to be done.
But it depends on the developer. Some big time developers, this isn't that big of a project.
Oh, no, I don't think...
For others, it's a lot of money, yeah.
Right, but still, again, making it handicap accessible, you know, putting in an elevator. I mean, there's many things that would need to be considered and...
Oh, yeah, yeah, the elevator itself, bringing it up to ADA requirements is going to, is going to be a...
Right. But, and again, I'm just going to say, I'm in agreement again with, as I've said multiple times tonight, I think that I would like to get this to the mayor as clean as possible for the RFP process, just so we're not limiting the number of bidders, so...
So if we don't have some restrictions, I mean, a builder could come in, bulldoze the, the building that exists.
We could talk about every scenario on the planet. Aliens could invade as well. We have to do something that gives some flexibility to the mayor.
So what I'm saying is the developer could come... Number two, we've discussed this before, require future developers to preserve the historic character of the building. We've had extensive conversations about that, what does it mean?
Absolutely. It's insistently been a priority, so that's smart to put that in.
Right, but again, does putting solar panels on top of the building destroy the character somehow? No, it does not, you know, but again, leaving that, that discussion there, when a builder comes in with a proposal, we're saying it needs to preserve it, we're not saying bulldozing it down, we're not saying, you know, there was some...
So you would put that under a requirement rather than a recommendation?
It says required. It says required.
Right.
So you're actually requiring the building stay.
Right. So three, you've covered four proposals.
You're requiring 450 for minimum bid. You're requiring the building stay.
Which is a number coming out.
So really, number one through three would be what we're looking at for the requirement.
That's a number that, that I think you shouldn't set in stone, because if you split the parcel and whatever restrictions you put on it and you have an appraisal that says there's a certain value to it, that's the number that you should be going with, with your minimum bid is the appraised value. We don't know what that appraised value is. This is just a ballpark guessing it, if we just split the parcel since the...
So that's better as a recommendation than a requirement?
It seems like it would. It would give them flexibility.
Or rephrase it so that it's something about the appraised value, not a specific number.
And that's what I brought up at the beginning of the meeting, if somebody comes in at 425...
Kind of development and you prefer over money.
Right.
You know, what do you prefer? Because if it's 450, but we can get 300 and what you want, what do you, you know what I mean? So you're locking yourself into a number and if it's too close to the market value of the property, the market value of the property is highest and best use, not what you want. You know, they're not always the same thing.
I mean, I'm fine, I'm fine with that being a recommendation. That is a little bit more flexible.
With what being a recommendation?
With the 450 being the minimum sale price. Because, I mean, it's true, it's like, what do we, 450 or 425 and, or 400 and getting something that's going to be really viable there makes more sense.
If somebody comes in at 350, but they're going to offer community space in the basement, mixed business on the first and four units of a completely rehabbed, I think that's a yes. You know what I mean? Again, if that's up to the mayor.
I think you have, we have to trust these three people.
Yeah.
They want the best.
No, 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 it has to be split before we can RFP it. When we RFP it, we have to give a property description that says, this is the property, this is how many acres, this is, you know, it has to be split so that the appraisal can be done appropriately so that the appraised value can be determined since the parcel's split. Because the value of the property now is such of a whole thing together.
Okay, all right, I see, I understand. Yep.
So if we can, then let's just start and go down the list with number one. Are we comfortable with the recommendation of a minimum bid of 450,000? Yes.
Yeah, sorry, is the affordable, affordable housing unit...
Why don't we wait on that and just go back to number one for one second, because I think we might have consensus on one. It's a recommendation for the minimum bid of 450,000, not a requirement. I think we're, we're good on that one. Very good.
Would you want to rephrase it? So it's recommended to the, the value, the appraised value and not tie it to a number?
Yes.
Yeah, because what if it appraises at 800? Do you really want 450 or do you want as much as you can get?
Or, or the opposite. If it appraises at 200, do you not want to...
Minimum may be equal to the appraised value. Something like that. Or if you want it to be a percentage, because you're going to give credit for something other than highest and best use. Not if, not if we say that the minimum bid is 450.
Okay, so number one, I have the recommended minimum bid equal to the appraised value of the building.
No, I thought it was going to be if it was what we wanted versus dollars and if...
That's a recommend...
Right, it's a recommendation. We're talking about getting the $450,000 figure off there.
So it's not a requirement, it's just a recommended. Okay. Now, the question was regarding the affordable units, one or two?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I was just wondering, are the affordable units in, are these going to be essentially deed restricted affordable units or is that what the proposal we'd be looking for from a developer or at least as a proposal?
Typically, affordable housing is minimum 20 years, usually 30 or 100.
Well, no, I know, I just was wondering, is that actually going to be at the state's definition of affordable?
Yes.
And, and the deed restriction?
That was the intent. I mean, we're, we're only at 6% of our 10% goal, so anytime we can get one or two units on the inventory is great.
Okay, I didn't know if that, so that is something that's going into the, the actual RFP is that it would be a deed restricted unit, so we're going to deed restrict the developer also on the affordable housing?
In order to count towards the state, it has to be.
Yeah, no, I know, that's what I'm wondering, is that going to be part of it?
But again, that's, it's not, when you look at the...
It's not required.
Okay.
The language would be for affordable housing. It's not a requirement, it's a recommendation. If somebody came in and said, you know what, we're going to just put, I would like to put in eight market value units, we're going to pay, you know, top dollar above the assessed value. If that's what the mayor wants to go with, then that's what she could go with, all market value. But if they agree to the, in their proposal they have for the affordable units, then they would be deed restricted.
And I understand, and it seems to me like that's a pretty good, pretty good way to think about it. I mean, that these are just proposals and these are just ideas, so I guess I don't really understand why we would have much friction with at least, you know, giving the residents some peace of mind and at least adding a, as one of the proposed goals that we have, you know, that market-based housing would be preferred. I mean, I don't know why that, I mean, if, if...
Because they, because they want at least one or two units of affordable.
Yeah, that's right, but I mean, we could say that, you know, market, I mean, in the order, we could say that market-based housing is preferred and then we can have one or two units of affordable. I mean, that...
As a recommendation.
As a recommendation. I mean, this is not required, I mean, it's not required, but just to, just to give the...
So instead of saying at least, saying no more than...
Affordable at all. It's not, you don't develop property for affordable, it's not a moneymaker. You do it for other reasons.
I think that's not quite true. I believe the value to be seized as affordable housing as a moneymaker.
I think that's the best...
And so, right. Yeah, so I know that's not just something we're having.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a way to solve this here, it would be kind of a limit for everybody. I mean, if we, if we make it just simply a proposal, in, as a proposal in there that we have, that we'll be looking for market rate units, so if we take it as granted that that's what people will be looking for anyways, the developer, there's no harm in putting it in the proposal.
Well, I think it comes back to the, the whole thing of whether or not we're adding, you know, how many recommendations, which is what the concern was. If we do add a number seven and say proposals which provide space for neighborhood business and mixed use are preferred, you know, we could continue to generate a very long list, which, you know, hits the, the RFP, may limit some of the, the bidders.
No, I understand that. I guess I just don't know how, we all know how this got started. We all know how this got started, right? I mean, this is a very sore point, so I don't know how the feedback could have been here that we're going to, that we would not include, you know, something like that would be something that we would refer not to include, but put in that we are looking for affordable housing units in the proposal. I mean, how could the feedback that you heard possibly have got you to that conclusion? I mean, why would we be saying affordable housing makes the list, but not market rate housing if that's been the whole reason this whole thing got started as, as being a major sore point for the neighborhood and the city?
I'm pretty sure I have in my notes that the neighborhood was okay with the minimum number of affordable units.
Okay, no, I'm not saying they're not, I'm just saying that why...
I mean, I know that there was, they didn't want an entire affordable housing project, but I did hear from a number of residents that we're okay with one or two units being...
Sure, sure. And I mean, like, like you're saying, we don't want a whole project of affordable housing. That's why I'm saying about just adding a line, whatever you want at ease to say, you know, it's, you know, preferred market rate.
But again, I want to talk about putting somebody at ease. We're not saying that this is going to be, you know, what the developer is going to do with the property. I just, I'm not looking to, you know, put a lot of things in here or even, you know, load it down with the recommendation that it's going to be a, a park and, we need to provide maximum flexibility here for those.
But some of the maximum flexibility you're proposing is not at all accounting for what the residents have asked for. I mean, I guess that's why I'm confused. I mean, the...
I think it counts a lot for what the residents...
The park is up, the green space is not there, the affordable housing is there. I guess I'm not sure, that's why I'm starting to lose a little of where, what's driving this proposal? I mean, why is that not there and the other, I mean, is that the feedback you heard?
We've had multiple meetings on this, we've taken a lot of community input and again, I'm going to defer to my other counselors here if I'm misstating this, but, you know, this isn't a debate about affordable housing, it's a debate about, the purpose of the meeting is the authorization to give the mayor the authorization to dispose of the property with some recommendations. Well, I'm not looking, and I can't reiterate this enough tonight, I'm not looking to include everything in this proposal. I'm not looking to tie the mayor's hands. I want to provide maximum flexibility for the sale of the property.
Well, why is it important enough to put a recommendation that you have to have affordable housing, but you won't put a recommendation that you prefer market-based housing? I mean, it seems to me you don't want to bind the mayor with another thing, but you certainly don't bind, mind binding her with number five. I mean, it seems to me like you're giving a priority to that. And I understand what you're saying, that you're hoping for a develop, which I think we all are, say 12 units like Cousek Kozinski's talking, a couple of affordable, I think that's what works for everyone, but I think to, why is one in the proposal and one isn't in the proposal?
Well, I think, I mean, I can answer that.
So should we put, you're saying then for the, to say the proposal which provides one to two units of affordable housing and the other is market-based? I mean, we're not putting a separate one in there saying there, then we now have a preference of market-based housing.
I mean, I think that's implicit in saying that we, we are encouraging one to two units of affordable. There's no way that someone's going to just put one to two units of affordable and that's it, the other ones are going to be market-based, because they're going to have to subsidize the affordable. And, you know, the reason affordable is in there is because it's, it's a community goal. It's been, you know, highlighted in the master plan multiple times. I mean, we know why it's in there.
I don't have a problem with it.
And I think that it's important to understand that this is, what is, goes into our recommendations is not going to put anybody at ease. This is, this is going to be what's going to be read by the developers.
Well, the developer's going to look at it and they're going to say, this is going to cost me money, so I'm going to offer less money for the project. That's what they're going to say. So certainly to encourage the developers, we're interested in market-based housing, we're interested in home ownership of residential units, to me makes sense as part of the proposal.
What about if there is a line that says, sorry? What if there's a proposal that those that are 100% affordable housing will be ranked lower or not considered or...
I think that would open up a huge...
Well, I mean, honestly, I think it needs to be a...
What's the difference in saying proposals that provide for five or more, five or more units, five units of market rate housing would be given preference? That implies that the other five, seven, two, one would be affordable. It's a, it's, it's a matter of semantics really, but if you say the preference would be given to proposals that have at least half of the units be market rate, the implication is you know somebody's going to come in and, and offer affordable.
What about a percentage? I mean, because we don't know how, you know, there's, there's no plan. What if it's no more than 25% is affordable? Or 30% or...
We're asking that you put the language of market rate in there so that it comes to people.
I'm sorry that you find this amusing, but it's not.
I know, I mean, it's... They could add onto the building, they could, you know, there's really no way to tell.
I mean, that's, I mean, it's like trying to look into a crystal ball and, I mean, I mean, that's, I mean, it's like, trying to look into a crystal ball, and, I mean, there's a lot that takes into figuring out what you can put in the building. It's not just a building itself, but you've got to, you've got to look at the units, you've got to look at the number of bedrooms, the number of bedrooms triggers parking, parking drives everything, parking drives everything. And if you wanted to put in language that this will meet, I have language somewhere about all, all of the rules and regulations of the city's land use boards, then you're ensuring that those parking requirements will be in place, and that, that will drive the development scenario. You know, whether they, because if it's specific retail, triggers different-
So since we don't, we can't guess the number on a unit, should it be a percentage?
Well, do you, if you're gonna, if you want mixed use, if you start assigning a number of units, then that's, then that's different, it's a different type of, you know, if you start listing, you know, that if you want so many market rate and so many affordable, or whatever, then you're pretty much saying we don't want commercial. Or don't put it in the ranking criteria. Don't put it in there at all. Just put it in the description saying, you know, the, the city would prefer to see projects that are mixed use, or are, you know, market rate, or whatever, I mean, you don't have to make it a ranking criteria, you can leave it out completely, and let the proposals, let the, let the, let the developers who have access to the financing tell us what makes sense with that building. 'Cause none of us really know, nobody in this room is a developer, so we're all guessing what makes most sense.
But the neighborhood is looking for some protection from another whole building of affordable housing, because that happened to them before.
And again, I would be more than willing to consider striking that, the only issue then is when we start looking at some of the others, and we say proposals that incorporate publicly available community space, or if you're looking at adaptable, barrier-free accessible adaptable residential units. At what point do you start saying that one is now above the, you know, commercial space is now higher than market space, or market residential space? So basically, if you start striking one, then we might as well start, again, as I've said, let's make this as clean as possible for the develop, or for the proposals to come in, but again, if we're not putting in mixed proposals with neighborhood business and mixed use, then why are we ranking residential, or suggesting that we're looking for one to two units of affordable housing in residential? Just for the sake of argument.
I think we certainly could go with either market rates housing and to say we have, we would prefer to have one or two units of affordable housing, or strike both.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if we, if we have that, if we're putting that in for the housing, then we've just, you know, prioritized that over mixed, mixed use for business.
Oh, mixed use, I would see mixed use as a higher priority.
But we've never mentioned mixed use, you know, previously.
I haven't, in, in the proposal, I mentioned in number four, said that-
We didn't propose it at the last meeting.
Yes, we didn't, we didn't, you're absolutely right, that's why I'm proposing it tonight, yes.
Part of this, again, you know, my, I'm gonna use the word frustration, is at the previous subcommittee meeting, we moved, we voted to move forward with the recommendations that were suggested by the planner, with the exceptions of numbers three and eight. So that's pretty much exactly where, I'm not gonna say word for word, but exactly what is on the shortlist, the list that I provided tonight, is what we moved, and what we voted on at the previous subcommittee meeting. So that's why I'm saying, I'm more than willing, you know, to readdress that, we can start taking some of those off, but the idea of opening everything up again, which is what we're kind of doing tonight, and suggesting, well, what about this, or adding that, you know, it's-
I think we have the opportunity to have some other counselors here, who will be at the full council meeting, and I think it's important we consider these items now, rather than at the, than bringing them up at the full council, to try to hammer it out.
So you're not gonna use this list at all, is that what you're saying, you're gonna use just this?
No.
We, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't gone through all of these, we are gonna be here very late, there's no question about that. So, what, the last thing that we're hearing proposed is that we consider either having a very long list, or start striking off a few more of them, and that would include the proposal of one to two affordable housing units, so that wouldn't be on the list. And we've also had input from the city planner, recommendation, if you will, that if we make a very long list with a lot of rankings, that it will limit the bids that we receive. So, so far we have, as far as we've got is number one, I recommend a minimum bid equal to the appraised value of the building. Number two, require future developers to preserve the historic character of the building. I think we've also heard, that's a requirement.
I, I would, I would, as much as I, I don't like to see buildings raised, I like to see them reused, that may be too restrictive, in my opinion, to put a historic character requirement. We did that on, on Memorial Hall, in the center of town.
Then vote against it in the city council, but I mean, that's something that's consistently come up from everybody.
I know, I know it happens, I'm just saying, I'd like to go on record and say-
If that's a deal breaker for you, then go now.
If, if we have to say, you know, remove some restrictions, then I think that would be one that I would be willing to remove sooner, rather than the number of residential units. And I mean very well, I understand.
We'll chime in and say, too, I'm not in favor of removing a requirement to preserve the historic character of the building. I think we've also heard that very clearly from the community, that they, they want that building to stay. And in fact, in front-
I, I, I agree with that.
Yeah, and looking at some of the previous discussions we've also had, was whether or not to maintain the front of the building, you know, would, what if somebody wanted to build out on the, on the front of the building, instead of on the back of the building? And in our previous discussions, we decided not to include that, because, again, you're getting too restrictive, and saying, well, what if they just wanted to build the elevator shaft on the front of the building? Well, that's okay, you know, versus, you know, building out the entire front, you know, by 20 or 30 feet. So in the previous recommendations, we decided not to look at, we think that the, again, when you look at a plan, when you look at a proposal, you're going to be able to tell whether or not they're truly preserving the historic character of the building, versus, you know, building 20 foot of vinyl siding off the front of it.
Nathan, do you know, is, is number three, does that need to be removed, because that will have to have been done before?
I think that that has to be removed, at least on what I'm hearing, so it's not really part of the, the authorization, we're looking to split the property first.
Somehow we have to define what we're gonna be selling.
No, but it will have to be done before this RFP.
Right, but that's fine, but we have to, I think we have to be the ones who say, the council has to endorse a plan, and the plan is that we sell parcel A.
Isn't it in ordinance and planning right now to do that?
We had the phone carrying last night.
No, that's rezoning, that's not, that's not what we sell, I think we have to say what we sell, otherwise, what are we doing?
Okay, sorry, I was thinking of something.
So we have to say, we're gonna sell a parcel A, and it's gonna contain approximately an acre, and it's gonna have to be set back, or go back about 330 feet off the, off the parcel.
So do we free them?
Well, I don't know, I mean, when you're looking at the authorization to sell the property, currently it's together, so if we're looking to move this in two weeks, I think we would be looking at, and again, I'm, maybe, Jessica, if you can chime in and tell me if I'm wrong here.
Sorry, I'm looking up something else.
But we're, we're making, proposing a motion to authorize the mayor to sell this school, since it's not currently split, I, I'm thinking that it would kind of need to be in here as a requirement, that it's going to, the property will be split. Would I be wrong there, or are you saying that we actually wouldn't be able to move forward on this now in August, until after planning has, you know, split the-
I think, but I'm not sure, that you would have to split it as part of your motion.
Right, exactly, that's what I'm saying, so we would keep number three in there, yeah. No, and I agree with you, I know what you're saying, but I think because it's not split yet, it should be part of the motion. So proposals which provide, number four, proposals which provide barrier-free accessible and are adaptable resident, residential units should be ranked higher? I mean, that was one of the previous-
If we're taking out the other ones, which I'm not sure if we are, then maybe we should just take a halt, make it super simple, and not have any of those, if we're taking out affordable housing, we're taking out the-
Mixed use, I mean, for-
Why wouldn't we want to take out a, a recommendation for mixed use?
It's not even in the-
Why would we want to take? That was really cool.
I think what we're getting, or the discussion we're-
Is building wrong?
Not currently.
Is the idea of putting, giving the mayor something that now would say that we're providing a recommendation for proposals that have mixed use, is now higher than anything else. So if we take out the affordable housing, the idea of having, you know, any housing there, suddenly we're saying we want mixed use, and we're favoring that over a proposal that might very well have six units with one of them being affordable housing and community space in the basement. And because we didn't mention any of those things previously, except for the mixed use, so now, suddenly it seems like we're telling the mayor, we, we really want mixed use.
That's what I heard from the neighborhood, but, I mean, you were-
That's what I heard from anybody, that's why I'm-
Mixed use, mixed use.
Mixed use, that we have some economic generator, some place for jobs.
But I wasn't at every, so I'll-
I mean, it's just a thought, and, you know, I don't, I mean, to finish it down, but, you know, we came up with three that we've agreed on so far, and those are pretty much non-negotiable. You know, those are, those are, like, this, we've not the sale price-
First one is a recommendation, but the other two-
You know, but, but it's tied to the, it's tied to the, you know, valuation of the property, you know, maintaining historic character, and then splitting the property. Why can't we have a section now, the ordinance, after many, you know, meetings, these are, these are some other considerations. Affordable housing, you know, and so, and she can take them or leave them, but they're considerations, and they're at least on paper, we're not, we're not mandating them, but they're on, in front of the mayor when she's creating the RFP, mixed use.
Did you recommend, is there another paragraph you were talking about, where you basically summarize what you would like to see, but aren't a recommendation or a restriction?
That doesn't sound like anything we would have in the end.
So in a, in a RFP, you have a property description, so you're gonna say in that property description, you know, the basics of how many acres, how many square feet, it's, the building's the size, it's three floors, it's not this much appropriate surface.
You already have drafted this, can we see it?
Or draft.
But the description isn't anything that would come before city council.
It's, you're changing the description. You're gonna change it, right, because you're splitting it, so this is actually drafted as if the whole thing is being, both parcels were being disposed, not that it was being split. So that's, it's gonna have to be revised.
'Cause what I, what I was getting, I was wondering, can we have like, little like, three, kind of proposal we mentioned, and then this paragraph, assigning what the general idea is what we'd like to see, so the mayor and you will have an idea of what the community would like to see. But give you the flexibility, you know, but not make it a requirement or restriction, that some developers don't go, whoa, that's 12 things, you know?
Right, I mean, the thing that, a couple of things that, that I'm, that have not been mentioned at all, is the financial viability of the developer. We've had situations where we've disposed of properties, and we've had buyers who've not had the financing or the capacity to upgrade those buildings, and I don't want to see that building sit there for 10 years, and not, and whoever purchased it doesn't have the, the financing and able to do it. So that's, that's something that's kind of a concern to me, is that we go through this whole process, they have a great proposal, and then they don't have actually the money to actually put into it. So I think that's really an important piece that needs to be in there, is that they've got, they can show proof of the ability to get the bank loans to do the project, and they have a cost estimate of what the development project is going to cost. So they do a really brief pro forma, that they know that it's gonna cost them, you know, 1.2 million dollars to bring this building back to life, and that they can get the financing to do that.
Well, certainly I would think that if, if you do an, send out an RFP, if, if the developer looks at that, a smart developer would bring, either have the cash to do the deal, or go to the lender and get a, a letter of pre-approval, pre-qualification, an endorsement of the plan.
We've had them fall through, we've had, um, RFPs fall through, Memorial Building was one of them. The Memorial Building was one of them.
Sometimes they fall through.
We've had the, we've had-
So did you just end up adjusting the RFP, like, put it out there for four months, you don't get proposals that you like?
No, we received proposals, they couldn't get the financing to do it.
What are you suggesting you put in for language, Jessica?
Well, she just wants to be able to evaluate the developer based on their ability to fulfill their project plan as part of their ranking criteria.
And I'm certainly not opposed to that, I think that makes complete sense, but, you know, when we're looking at strictly the authorization for the mayor with the recommendations, I don't really see how that, you know, would fit into-
The other thing that I also want to just bring up, that you could potentially put as a restriction, that if they don't do anything over a certain period of time, the city either takes the property back, or something happens, so that, again, you don't have somebody sitting on a property with nothing happening for 15 years.
Absolutely.
You mean once a soul?
So, I mean, that's the, and I don't know if the city wants it that, though, I mean, I'm just putting that out there, we might not want this building back. But I think there should be something that, that forces them to not just put a bid in, that's gonna hit all of our criteria, and then they can't do it. You know, they get the award, and then they can't get the financing to actually make it happen, that to me would be extremely sad.
Is that something that can-
What's that? Yeah.
Is that something that, from the mayor's end, she can insert that without-
Well, then I can see that from your notes here, the financial liability.
That's what I'm saying, it's a really rough draft and it's-
No, but that's a good thing to put in there, I was looking for, like, the description, where you were saying we can put things, sorry?
It's in the beginning, it's the second page, I think, of the property.
Is, is there anything that prevents the mayor from, from inserting those, those types of language into RFPs? We don't have to mandate that.
No, 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 well, I don't, no, I don't think so, I don't know what the-
Yeah, that's the description of the property, what Joe was asking about.
Improving your financial viability into some satisfaction of the chief executive, I think makes sense. And your prerogative.
No, that's what I'm saying, it should be part of the motion, it's really something, again, that we're leaving up to the mayor to, to ensure.
Do you agree, Jessica, or do you think?
Yeah, that's fine, I think it's fine just leave it as something that we put in as the ranking criteria, but I just, you know, that's, that's been a concern of mine, that somebody puts a great, fabulous proposal in, and we're all wooed, and then it sits there for 10 years.
Yeah, that's really smart, 'cause that's happened.
Well, it wouldn't, how can it sit there for 10?
Where that's happened.
I'm, I'm confused, how can it sit there for 10 years if you're wooed and you sold the property?
Because they don't get the financing to-
Well, if they don't get the financing, then they don't pay you, or presumably.
But they pay us.
Unless they're willing to pay us and then go for financing later.
She's talking about the financing to do the project that they're, you know, to do the renovations, to make the proposal. The financing that they would give us is just whatever we, like, in other words, if it was, had stayed at the 450, that's what we get, we're done. What she's talking about to complete the proposal, and to have the project completed.
Is there like a bond that they could post?
No, no, what you've done, what I've done with projects is like, especially with like a small business loan, or something like that, like, say it's $400,000, they'll do like a letter of intent, because say you haven't bought the property yet, so you have to go and say, okay, I've submitted everything for this SBA, here's all my money, it definitely is in place, so then the landlord is more comfortable with selling you the property, and/or setting up some sort of rental agreement. People do letters of intent all the time, I don't think that's an outpouring, just request for them.
I think it's a good point you ran up, Jessica, and I mean, especially the fact that some, you know, could sit on it for, for a while, or, or not get financing, but, you know, there's a possibility, again, I don't know if you have to include it or not in your, in your, in the proposal tonight, but I, I think if I talk to the city attorney, he can likely include in the deed, the fact that it's not, you know, if, if there's been no performance after so many years, then it reverses to the city, if that's, you know, as, as an option. And it would automatically revert back, so you couldn't do, you know, where developers are sitting on it, it's a storm, it's an vacant building, just sitting there.
So I'm gonna pull us back here to the recommendations versus the requirements, 'cause again, that's, is my understanding of our task tonight, was to hammer these out, and just make clear what we're proposing. So so far we have three recommend, or, excuse me, three, one recommendation, the recommendation for the equal, the minimum bid to be equal to the appraised value, and then we have two requirements, requiring future developments to preserve the historic character, and to split the parcel by 350 feet back, where the fence line cuts in, and retain the back part for open space or green space, we have, was the, the last thing that we were discussing.
Open slash green space?
Sure. Okay. Now, there is, there has been discussion about the rankings, and the rankings going back and forth, of potentially changing them from rankings, or where we're saying that they're ranked higher, to making it more of a paragraph expressing what the council, or what the city would like. So consideration should be given to bids that incorporate the following, mixed use, affordable housing, I'm throwing market housing in there, too, I mean, we're, we're putting it in, you know, barrier-free accessible, so not having it as a ranking, but just saying that these are the things that we would like to see in potential things for a bid. Is there any consensus on doing that versus eliminating, or eliminating the rankings of one, two, or three, and just putting in that consideration for the, the bid should include any of the following?
I think it makes it simpler for us to find consensus on that, because I think we could debate for multiple days rankings, and I think that's, should be something that the mayor has discretion. That's my personal opinion. But I think, I don't think-
I think it's fine, I mean, I, I think the mayor understands what the neighborhood has gone through with, you know, affordable housing. My concern is that it doesn't-
Like tired of that, people, it's like, they're suffering, going through affordable housing, to me, it's economic bigotry to say, these units, people are worse than anyone else, I wish we wouldn't say this neighborhood is suffering, because they have people who are making market wages.
Well, I also think that, you know, but us leaving these things out, that we've been, we've worked so hard for, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense for us as a committee. I feel like we should include, you know, all of these recommendations, 'cause we worked hard to get them, you know, so I think leaving them out completely, kind of-
Doesn't show that we had consideration for these items, and that they should be considered-
They should be considered.
As the mayor considers the proposal, I agree with you.
Yeah, so I think mixed use, I think affordable housing, I'm fine with market rate housing, I think accessible, I think those are, those are- I think accessible, I think those are, those are ones that we found to be, you know, overall of our deliberations, to stand out above the rest. You know, and I think, I'm trying to think if there's any other ones that were, I mean, I know that the open space in the back was a big one, but I think we've already, we already included that.
One through three are done, weren't they?
They're done, so, you know.
Not going back at this point for tonight? I mean, if we can't agree on one to three, it looks like we won't be moving this forward.
Actually, I guess I do have to go back to one to three, because, I just have a quick question. I thought that.
I thought we were there.
Yeah, no, I thought that on number two, that JP said that he does not support that keep, maintain, keeping the building there. I thought that's what you said.
I certainly, I certainly support the recommendation that we preserve the historic nature of the building as part of the project. Yes, I do, I see it as a recommendation and not as a requirement.
But it's a.
The other two members of the committee, I think, are very strong in their opinion that it be a requirement.
So, we are done there? So, we are done? Okay, thank you.
There would at least be a two to one vote on that. Separate, I'm a minority opinion, but a majority.
The full council vote.
Oh, that was one way behind the, that was the lightning.
Did you see that right behind the building? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that was right, right over.
I thought it hit my head the way it did.
We do have another sheet here, which is some of the proposals that JP is bringing to the table tonight, too, and.
I think the most important one has to do with the density of the project.
Which number is that?
Number.
Number six or number seven?
Two number sixes.
Number, oh geez, I'm sorry, number six, first of all. In order to maintain a balance in the number of residential units in the neighborhood at this, at the time of sale, the city replaces deed restriction, no more than 12 residential units. The question I had for the property is, Jessica, the building as it stands, one could build in addition, according to the proposals that we've written so far, you could build in addition to the existing structure, is that true?
You also just, you just want to split the property, and you have to buy by parking. Parking will drive the development. You can't build off the back of the building too far, because you need to provide.
Build out in front.
You have to build.
Let's say you're building out in front.
But I thought you didn't want to, you didn't want to do that.
I didn't see any restriction here.
Well, that would probably change the historic character of the building, if they built out in front, I would say. That would be a pretty drastic change.
Let's say somebody came up with a plan that built a wonderful structure in conformance with the existing structure.
We've come up with all sorts of scenarios.
The parking will drive what can and cannot happen.
Parking will drive it, I understand.
So, you do, you know, one bedroom units, you have to provide a parking space for every bedroom. So, depending, it's going to depend on the number of bedrooms in each unit, it's going to depend on how many units that is, and that'll trigger additional visitor parking on top of that. You're going to have to have buffers, you're going to have.
I guess my question is.
Stormwater management, I mean, that's what I'm thinking.
Could somebody, could somebody potentially put 50 units here?
It's impossible to put a number on it. You're not, you're not hearing what I'm saying. The, like, the parking drives what, so.
Then I think, I think it's important to be able to know whether we're going to have 50 units, or 40, or 30, or 20, or 12.
Then you're going to need to go hire a landscape architect, a stormwater engineer, an architect, to go figure that out. I can't do, I mean, I can't predict that. You have to have a whole development team that's looking at all of the different components and all of the different regulations you need to meet, not just in zoning, but stormwater related, to be able to figure out what that number is. And an architect needs to figure out heating systems, cooling systems, storage, trash removal, like, there's so many moving parts to put a plan in place, that I can't give you a number. I just, I can't. If you were to put in a requirement that the use of the building utilizes parking spaces that are appropriate, would that solve the problem? If something, if the requirement was actually around parking spaces, following the zoning guidelines? All you have to say is that the parcel has to abide by land. And then, and then that will drive what can and cannot happen.
Let me bring up a concern that I'll put right out on the table. If you look at the adjacent parcel, it has a half an acre of land. It is privately held. If a developer came along and said, I will aggregate the two parcels, that gives the developer an acre and a half to use to aggregate, if they bulldoze the house that sits there, and gives them extra parking space, that they could put in multiple units. Probably 30, 40 units or more, because the parking would be available. And you don't need, I think, a landscape architect to know, it would be more than 12. And that concerns me, because I'm concerned about the density in the neighborhood. I think the neighbors would like to see a reasonable number that's similar to the number of units that exist in the neighborhood per acre, and hence, I had the proposal to limit the number of residential units to 12.
Parsons Village is, meets the density of the neighborhood. It meets the density, so if.
I'm not saying.
That's what you just said, you want the development to meet the density of the neighborhood. Parsons Village actually meets the density of the neighborhood. So, if you don't want a Parsons Village, then you don't want something that meets the density of the neighborhood.
I'm looking at the nearest neighborhood, and I'm calling Federal Street, the south side, an example of.
It's extremely dense.
It's extremely dense, and we shouldn't have more units than would exist per acre on the south side of Federal Street.
But that's, that's the same density that you have at Parsons Village. It's actually, Federal Street is actually denser, I believe, than the, than the Carson, the Parsons Village. If you provide open space, there's nothing wrong with density. Density is a good thing. Density brings families, neighborhoods, kids to play with one another. They can wander around the neighborhood, they can, it's a community. It's, you know, there's nothing scary about density. As long as you provide community amenities for people to go, and places for them to congregate, density is a good thing. It prevents us from using up raw land on the outside of town that we should be preserving for farmland, it provides economic development and benefit and tax base in appropriate locations in the dense neighborhoods that we have. It's a good thing to have density in the right places. This is a neighborhood that is dense. You provide those community amenities, you provide open space, you provide places for families to go and congregate, I think it's only going to add to that community.
And also, just for the sake of time, we did at the last meeting have the discussion previously regarding deed restricting the parcel. Again, if I remember correctly, it was, basically, we didn't.
I'm not sure the facts were on the table, as to the number, as to the number of units potentially that could be built at the site, and that it would exceed.
But again, what I'm hearing again is, we don't have the actual number, there was a discussion that if it burned down, did somebody build 80 units? And I do recall, if I, if I recall correctly, Mr. Durby, neither of us were interested at that time of deed restricting the property.
It says, for me, it's too hypothetical. I mean, you could go to Federal Street and buy up every house on Federal Street and put in the development going down the street, you know, but.
Wouldn't make any economic sense.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like, in order for this.
This would make economic sense to a developer.
I'm just saying, in order to do this, you'd have to burn down the building, you'd have to get the neighbors to sell.
Or add to the building, in an historic character way.
I don't know, it just seems.
I'm still not in favor of deed restricting the property. I'd like to, again, move this forward and not have, you know, even a developer looking right away and saying, well, it's deed restricted, and.
Let's not, not deed restricted, restrict it, let's say that it's a requirement of the proposal, that the proposal not call for more than X number of residential units.
Why don't we say it's a ranking?
We're getting away from the rankings. We've gotten rid of the rankings, because now, suddenly, you're ranking residential units higher than mixed use, if we throw ranking in there for residential.
Well, you've been doing that all night.
But if we say, if we say that the building has to stay and that they have to keep the historic character, I mean, the building, just the building as it is, even if you completely gut it and change the interior structure, can't support that many, that many units.
What's a reasonable number?
Well, I'm just saying, as it stands, what we're, what we're requiring, it doesn't, it doesn't allow it to have that many units. I mean, I think.
What would you think, what would you imagine to be the most dense use of that structure?
Of the structure? I would say, you know, there's four rooms on each floor, and I would say each of those could be a condo, so that, to me, you know, would be eight, and if you use the basement, or if you use the loft, maybe 12.
So, that's what I propose, 12 units.
But I think that, oh, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, we don't need to, the building is what is going to restrict the use of that. We don't need to deed restrict anything, the building is what is, can bear what it bears.
But, I'm sorry, so Jessica, you're, in, for the example that I just used of a rooming house, our current restrictions on parking are, if there is a bedroom, this is what the city council says, if there's a bedroom, there must be a parking space. For residential? For residential, but if it was a. I don't know if rooming house has a different category in the parking, I have to go with the zoning. I don't think, I don't think it does. I think we have just one residential category, but I'm not totally sure. But there's, if, you can go into our zoning code, and you can look at the parking requirements, and it will very specifically tell you, you know, for residential, you need to have one space per bedroom, and that you need, I think, every, after every 10 spaces, you need one additional space for visitors. Anytime you have anything retail, depending on what the retail uses, you're going to have different parking requirements. So, you know, even if you say mixed use retail, depending on what that retail uses, the parking requirements could be all over the place. And if you have multiple different types of retail, each one of those retails have to meet the parking requirements. Like, a restaurant needs way more parking than a professional office. Right. So, so it's really hard to say what the land can bear, because it's really going to be driven by, you know, specific types of retail uses or professional businesses, or how many bedrooms they feel like they can get into a unit. You can say 12 units, but it could be 12 units in three bedrooms, or it could be 12 units in one bedroom. That's going to totally change the parking. And they will, the architects will work with the land developers to tweak, depending on how much square footage they have. So, they'll have to say, you're going to have to take a bedroom out of here, or whatever. So, yeah. But we don't, we, like, you can't go to the. You don't wait, they don't wait parking.
Well, and I don't know if this will put you mind at ease, but I've worked a lot with the rooming houses in Times Three, and there's, there's not a chance that this property would become a rooming house. It would just cost way too much money to convert the property to hold, to be able to support rooming house, and rooming houses, we're talking about very low profit margin. I mean, it's, like, people are renting rooms, these are pretty, not, like, really wealthy people that are in rooming houses, and it's not, it's not a high profit thing. There's no way you could spend a million dollars renovating that space and then make it a rooming house, unless you were just a philanthropist that, you know, had millions and millions of dollars and you wanted to do something.
I hate to bring it up, again, the Valley CDC's developed two that I know of, and they, and they continue to develop, so it's part of their development model. We've developed one as well in the city. We have one that we have CDBG funds to do, and it's right in the heart of downtown, and it serves a need. I mean, there's a need for it in certain locations. So, and they're usually where you can find services, or provide services as part of the package. There's not a lot of agencies that do that locally.
I just want to, I just thought that, I don't know if we should totally, just hear me out on my thoughts here, is to totally dismiss the idea of setting some reasonable number of residential units. And here's, here's my thought. I tend to agree with what Joe said earlier, at least in part, at least in the spirit of what he's saying, and I think with the neighborhood is, is that unfortunately, in this whole thing, the catalyst was affordable housing. But it's not really affordable housing, it's really density. And I know Jessica and I probably disagree on this, as we did with 40R and a few other things, but, but I actually think density is the real issue of the neighborhood, and it's the issue of, and I think this neighborhood, remember, this is industrial revolution style housing. You know, this was high-density housing packed into a small space. And I don't care, rich, poor, I think whether you can be Warren Buffetts, a bunch of Warren Buffetts stuck in a small area, and it's not, in my opinion, it's not the best ideal living conditions for you. You know, so I think space is, is important, and so I think that's really the objection of the neighborhood. I think it's, I think that's where the objection is, is just in having the, having a lesser density in an already very dense area. And so, I don't know if we should totally dismiss the fact that, that we could leave some reasonable level, again, I think Salem said, you know, there is some number out there, you know, that, that probably would be a reasonable number, but to give that, to give that, the character of it, at least, some assurance as to what the overall density could possibly be.
Well, I'm certainly willing, when I'm looking at the rest of these recommendations, we have a lot of other things that we're putting into the paragraph. I don't see that we couldn't put something into the paragraph, again, saying that consideration of bids that include less than 12 units.
But not a deed restriction?
Not a deed restriction.
I mean, because, like, really, the only way that this could be, the only reason to deed restrict it is if someone came in and willfully destroyed the building, because then it would be an issue, because then that would change, you know? But then, I mean, if that happened, there would still be.
You mean, like demolition by and collapse?
Yeah, or, I'm going to burn it down, so I can put 40 units of residential here. You know, but I don't know if we need to go that far in our recommendation to the mayor to dispose of the property. That's all I'm saying, is, it seems like we're looking into the crystal ball a little intently. I don't know if that is necessarily our charge right now.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm personally, I'm against deed restricting the property, but I am more than willing to include that into the paragraph regarding the considerations. And I'm just going to go through this very quickly, and I certainly won't allow as much time for consideration, JP, on any one of these individual ones, but if we're looking at what was provided by JP, parcel be divided approximately 330 feet back from Parsons Street, we've already addressed that, number one's a yes. City will obtain the rear section of the property, parcel B. Again, this is really what we discussed in number three on the other, the other piece, so I think, again, with the exception of some of the language where it says municipal park, we decided, you know, open space slash green space.
Certainly agreed with.
Three, parcel.
The question was whether we do this, try to establish it forever, or just leave it, we can have open space. With no, nothing definitive, no vote that says.
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't know if we want to necessarily make it forever, because things change, you know? So, you never know what's going to happen in the neighborhood, and what the neighborhood, the neighborhood's needs or wants might change.
And that was one of the things that you raised before, when we were talking about deed restrictions, was, you know, whether or not putting something in there on, and I think you have it in here, seventh, ninth, seven-ninths vote of the city council legislators legislative by, to change the deed restriction, but again, I just think that that's going overboard. Again, going through these, number three, parcel A, 48 Parsons Street to be offered for the minimum acceptable bid of 450. Again, we've addressed that, that's been resolved by recommending equal to the assessed value. Four, proposals for A, which create greatest number of permanent as opposed to temporary jobs, or maintain the greatest number of employment with the city, shall be given highest ranking. Not looking at ranking, we are certainly putting in something here that the consideration be for mixed use, neighborhood business.
I don't think that's, I don't think that has any place in this at all.
The highest number of jobs, you're saying, right? Well, and again, I think that that's kind of covered, when you're talking about mixed use and neighborhood business.
In calling it mixed use, I think that, that covers.
That covers, so, I just got to put a.
Yeah, that's what I think.
No next to number four, because we've kind of already addressed it over the paragraph, if you will. Number five, proposals which call for the fewest number of residential units shall be given preference. We're sort of on, I think, the cusp of talking about this paragraph again and saying, proposals with no more than 12 units, my-
I was thinking of the fewest in terms of priority, but if we're not going to prioritize the-
Right. Have less than 12 units.
Just finish talking about this.
Number six, again, unless somebody else has anything else, I, I just, I don't think we're going to get any in the motion with the deed restriction based on previous conversations either. Number seven, the process by which, okay, it's deed restriction. Number eight, proposals which incorporate separate publicly available common space shall, shall receive highest rankings. Again, common space is part of that paragraph.
Community space.
Community space.
Not that common, community space.
Right.
For example, room that would be available to the-
Right. And again, we previously discussed this, it's in number six on the other one, proposals which incorporate separate publicly available community space, possibly the basement should be ranked higher, but again, we're not, that number six is gone on the other one.
Community space covers it, I don't think.
Right.
We're at number nine. Proposals that provide for home ownership of residential units.
I don't, I don't agree with that. I don't agree with that. So, just because if you've been reading any of the literature that's been coming out, there's an absolute shortage of rental property and, and-
In New City?
In, in the, in the state of Massachusetts, in the United States.
I think you look aggregate, but if you look at New City as a neighborhood.
But, I mean, the reality is, is people can't afford houses and people can't afford mortgages. And as we're coming out of this mortgage crisis, people are, you know, good people are looking to rent. Good people are, have been forced out of their houses. And I think that this is, again, this is kind of a, this is kind of like a bias by, if you can't afford to own a home, then you're not good enough. And I don't agree that that-
I don't think anyone's saying that.
Well, this, this, this provides a preference for homeownership and I, and I think that that does. I think that if someone wants to put really good, nice condos or, or rental units, I don't see why that-
The only thing that I'm, I'm going to, we're talking about the paragraph.
Right, this is the paragraph.
And since it's in the paragraph, I'm fine with, with home, home, home ownership. I do believe that that, and I believe that was one of the things that the community did bring to our attention, that they, they would like people to have ownership of the property and not just see a bunch of rentals. We're talking about paragraph, paragraph is ambiguous, as we've been saying, or a little bit vague. It gives maximum flexibility. So just as we have one or two units of affordable housing, I'm fine-
I just needed to say it because it's true.
I, I've read those articles, I know what you're talking about, but I'm completely flexible with the home ownership here. Okay. Okay. Number 10, proposals which provide for barrier-free, we have that already. At least one unit of affordable housing should be ranked next. Number 11, we have that in the paragraph. And proposals which call for maintaining the historic nature, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped 12. Existing structure, we have existing structure in 12 and also for number 13.
Beautiful.
So just one final time, we're looking at number one, require, recommending that the sale be a minimum bid equal to the appraised value of the building. Number two, require the future developers preserve the historic character of the building. Number three, require the split of the parcel from 330 feet back from Parsons Street where the fence line cuts in and retain the backyard acreage for open space, green space. And then I will draft a paragraph that I'm sure we'll have some additional wordsmithing maybe at the full meeting, but we're considering the following. We're considering mixed use, market-based housing, one to unit, one to two units of affordable housing, consideration of proposals that have less than 12 units. Parcel has to abide by land use codes. I'm sorry, I have this not down here as a note. Would we like to add that, Jessica?
I think that's a given, too.
I know it's a given, but it seems-
Jessica mentioned it, but you have to go by the underlying zone.
But zoning can be changed, so-
But if it changes, then you're still saying that it's got to, you know, you're not going to have to, your grandfather did-
Well, it would say we wanted to abide by the current land zoning. You're looking for proposals that beat the current zoning right enough.
Right. We, we can't predict what the zoning will be in the future, but right now, the proposals would have to meet the current zone.
Right. So just clarification, Jessica, I want to make sure that your input here earlier, you were saying about putting some language in about the parcel abiding by the land use codes. Is that something that you feel absolutely has to be in here or is it just a given?
I don't think it, it doesn't, I don't think it has to be in there, but I just, you know, I wanted to be clear that, that we're not providing any waivers to zoning in this proposal, which some communities have done as part of it. We are, we are expecting, and it doesn't have to be a restriction, it doesn't have to be anything more formal, but it means that the language should be in there somewhere that, that the proposal is expected to meet all of the existing land use codes and regulations in the city.
So again, I think that's fine for the paragraph unless I hear otherwise, that in the paragraph that it's expected, proposals are expected to meet the land use codes. Okay?
Okay.
And then we have, again-
From that perspective, I can see that.
Community space and home, home ownership, yes.
So is that paragraph going to be part of the RFP?
It's going to be part of-
Part of our recommendation, our motion for the mayor's disposal of the property.
But it's not actually going to go in here?
Did you say the paragraph in the RFP that you-
Recommendation will be in the RFP.
I mean, we can force it, we can take it and say that-
We make the recommendation disposed and she makes the follow-up.
Because you're saying, we should just go to the paragraph here or not make sure it's here.
And we can let the market decide whether, what we want.
Our, our restrictions, our requirements, our recommendations are reflected in the RFP.
Yep.
Is that the mayor's understanding?
Well, I'm sorry, JP.
That the, our restrictions, requirements, or recommendations would become part of the RFP.
Your requirements would be a part of the RFP and the recommendations, and then of the way I understand it, then the rest would be considerations.
Mm-hmm. Right. So again, because we do have so many members of the full council here tonight and to avoid any further excessive discussion or, you know, frustration that we may have had at the last meeting, are we comfortable with this, going with, with the three recommendations and then a significant amount of considerations?
So that those recommendations and the paragraph are going to be put in the request for proposals?
Yes. But first off, let me just say, this is-
Maybe not verbatim, but yes, the spirit of it will be in there.
Right, this is again, strictly our motion that will, the motion will be the following to authorize the mayor to dispose of the property with the following requirements, recommendations, and then considerations.
Perfect.
Yes?